Is a proposed charter amendment converting the two council member at-large positions from two additional council member districts into two additional council member districts. For a reminder, upon the conclusion of the discussion around this bill, we will vote either to move the bill for full consideration by the full council or to delay the bill to a date certain. If the motion to move the bill to the full council fails, under Rule 5.13, a council member may still direct file the bill with the council secretary prior to noon on Thursday. So with that, I believe that Councilwoman Seda Baca is going to be presenting along with Councilwoman Flynn.
Yes, and Councilwoman Flynn just ran for some water, but he will be right back here. So I'll start off by first thanking the members of the public who are going to testify today, but also the ones who brought this idea to council members. And thank you to my colleagues for allowing us to calendar this and to Councilman Herndon, who's not here, but who really kicked off the conversation with the history of that large seats.
Can you do full screen, please? Thank you.
I'm a Mac user. I'm trying to figure out how to do this. Is it?
Control L.
Awesome. So we're going to start off just with a quick overview of what we're going to do today. I'll be brief because we've talked about this a little bit, and I want us to get to public comment. I wanted to read this quote to you guys. It's from a piece of research in the American Journal of Political Science that I think is important to contextualize this conversation. One of the most persistent findings by scholars of urban politics is that single-member district elections increase descriptive representation of underrepresented racial and ethnic groups on city councils. That is what's prompting this conversation. So just wanted to give you guys that. Some background, which we'll dive into a little bit later when Councilwoman Flynn contextualizes this further. In pre-1968, we had nine single district seats. In 1968, remember that date and what was going on in the world at that time, we had a charter change to add two at-large seats. In the past years, we know that we've had significant population growth here in Denver, 130,000 new residents since 2010. And we are in the process of redistricting at several levels right now, at the federal level, the state level, and our local level. We have a unique opportunity right now to have this conversation. It's not the only opportunity, but it's a unique opportunity because we can have this conversation about converting to single district seats without displacing a sitting at-large member. Both of the current at-large members will be term limited, and so nobody would be displaced from their duly elected seat at this time if we decide to move forward with this change. This is a little graph to kind of give you guys an idea of how our districts have grown over time. We've had significant spikes in recent years, and these numbers are even higher. We're waiting for our census data, as everybody knows. But these, this last bit right here showing the 23% change equates to about 12,000 people increased in our districts. And this map shows you a little bit of the heat where we have those concentrations of increases in population. Of course, the highest increases are in some of our new neighborhoods, including Stapleton area and our Union Station area. These are some numbers to go with that map. I would draw your attention to the second to last that's highlighted in red. That's a 23% increase, and that's the 12,000 constituents per district. So if additional council districts aren't added, our current 11 council districts will be serving an all-time high of over 66,000 constituents per district. And it's pretty difficult to run our districts on, at that level, because we've done a breakdown, and it breaks down to about $2 to $3, depending on the district, per constituent. Some of us in my district, we have the largest district, and right here, this 2018 data shows 75,000 in the largest district, my district, and 60,000 in the smallest district. But we know that even since 2018, we've had significant growth in my district, and we're well beyond 76,000. Some of the reasons that we want to have this conversation citywide are included here. And so this RNO and constituent accessibility issue is kind of the reason that the public brought this to our attention. A lot of constituents don't feel like they have as easy access to their council representatives as they should. For example, in my district alone, I have more than 30 RNOs. And so if I met with an RNO every single day of the month, I still wouldn't be able to get to all of my RNOs. The RNOs in each district vary, but this is a snapshot of why it's important to break down our districts a little bit. The accountability piece of this, at-large members, they're untethered to a specific demographic or geographic area. And so they're running a council office on the same budget that each of our districts are running on. But they're accountable, they're representing an entire city, but not technically accountable to a single constituency. And so this change could potentially add more accountability to those two roles if we converted them to districts. Competing interests with district members. At-large members, while they're representing the entire city, they have a different constituency than a district member. And so oftentimes, you get a situation where council members in at-large seats become the representative of non-residents of a district. A lot of special interests will lean on their two at-large council members, which is often in opposition of the most marginalized voices in a district. The strained budget and resources, that's a separate conversation, but a big reality right now. We're operating offices on less than $225,000 to represent, in my case, 76,000-plus people. And so this, in combination with the conversation we need to have down the road about budget and resources, is critical to serving our constituencies to the best of our abilities. Diluting minority votes and representation. That first quote that we started off with is important to remember. Also, the time period when we added the at-large seats is important to contextualize. That was during our civil rights movement, a little bit after, you've seen backlash across the country in recent times to social justice, racial justice movements. Some believe that the at-large additions in the 68 election was backlash to civil rights and enfranchisement of minority populations. So it's important to remember that. And this last bullet point, in Denver's 50-year history of at-large seats, 15 individuals have served, none have ever been credibly challenged for reelection, and only 2 of 15 have ever been people of color. So just to summarize our bullet points here, the goal of this change is to further localize our democracy, to tailor and make more accessible representation. Accountability to constituents, minimizing special interests and influence, that's an important one because, remember I said that special interests can often lean on two representatives where a regular constituent in a district doesn't necessarily always have that access? Money in elections for the at-large seats is more pervasive, and you see a lot of special interests have a lot of power over our elections in those two particular seats because you can't mobilize as much resources at the district level as special interests can mobilize for those at-large seats. This, we've gotten a lot of correspondence from constituents across the city about this potential change, and they've been, there have been very good questions and concerns raised. So we kind of wanted to lay out some of the arguments about the theory behind having at-large seats and really unpack what it looks like in practice. So the first main one we keep hearing is that at-large members get to focus on citywide policy issues. And in theory, that's a great thing, although in theory, we all should be focusing on citywide issues in, with a lens for our specific districts. But in reality, we do have council members who have brought citywide changes to the table that have been successful, including many of the council members sitting here on this dais. In my short time on council, we've been able to do several things that are, that have citywide impact, including our recent right to council. Another argument that we've heard is that at-large members serve as a backup for district members for constituent services, and they provide additional representation to constituents. This could be, on paper, a great equity tool, but in reality, it doesn't actually work that way. There's no guarantee that the at-large members will prioritize district-level constituents' issues, and there's no trend of deferring or council courtesy for minority issues when it comes to a vote that splits at-large members from a specific district. Additionally, at-large, another theory or argument that people have put forward is that at-large members serve as a balance to the mayor's power. And that actually, we have the opposite impact with at-large members. As I mentioned earlier, because it's very costly to run a citywide race, at-large members are susceptible to the same special interests that the executive branches and often vote in line with the mayor's agenda, reinforcing the heavy mayoral control that we have here in the city of Denver and further marginalizing the already marginalized. This is a little bit of a timeline for our stakeholder engagement process. As I mentioned, this was brought to us by constituents, and we kind of, we heard about it in September, and throughout March and April, we were kind of getting a feel for who might be interested in having this conversation. We requested that we discuss this proposal in committee, and then in May, we had, or May through July, we had a presentation from Councilman Herndon on the history of the at-large seats. We drafted a bill, and here we are. We've done some council member one-on-ones. We reached out to the clerk and recorder, and we are presenting to you today with the hope that you'll advance this to give the voters the opportunity to have a longer discussion leading up to our election, because the conversation doesn't stop here. You know, we have a long runway until November if this does get referred, to have a robust conversation citywide. And currently, we're doing a lot of conversations that are somewhat rushed around our bond issue, potentially the one we just talked about. So it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to keep having this big conversation about big changes in our city. Our proposed solution is to convert the two existing at-large council seats to single district seats, expanding our single district representation from 11 to 13. And the goals are to broaden and deepen representation by creating smaller communities of interest and giving residents a stronger voice and better access to their representatives on council. The ballot language that we've settled on, but we're open to feedback on, is "shall the charter of the sitting county of Denver be amended to convert the two at-large city council seats to district council seats, forming a city council composed of 13 district members?" This is some data for those of you who love our peer-city comparisons. The majority of our largest cities in America have bodies that have no at-large members. Cities with no at-large members include some of the people we always look to, to compare ourselves, including Austin, Baltimore, Chicago, LA, Madison, Minneapolis, New York, San Fran. The list goes on, and we have a list in the back of the, in the appendix of our comparisons with budget sizes, population size, all that data we love to share. This would be the implementation timeline if we get out of committee today, and we hope we do, to give the opportunity to the voters to have a conversation. We heard Councilwoman Sawyer say in the previous conversation that, "Don't the people in the city deserve to make this decision?" We believe that the city, the residents of this city do deserve the opportunity to decide how they want to be represented. And so we're just asking for that, and I want to kick it over to my colleague here to give us a little bit more history and input based on his experience on council and as a journalist over the years.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Somebody once said, and I think it was I, actually, that if Flynn and Seda Baca were proposing something, it had to be either the greatest idea ever to come along or the absolute worst. So, just to get that off the floor. But I want to say something a little different. This is, this is basically a value check, okay? And I understand that the timeframe isn't the best. I completely understand that, and I acknowledge and respect the views that have been expressed by some of you already, that this maybe, this should have come up earlier. We should have talked about it last year if we wanted to do such a thing. However, I think the circumstance that we're presented with today in the year 2020 with redistricting from the census and the fact that we have two at-large members who will be term limited, so there's an open seats, those circumstances will not occur again, if ever, in a census year until at least 2080. And that presupposes that whoever's elected to fill the at-large seats in 2023, they all continue to serve concurrently for 12-year terms. We don't know that. If they don't, then it may never reoccur. We would have to consider going to all district seats by districting somebody out of their, out of their incumbency, which I don't like to do. So I think it's incumbent on us to at least have this conversation. I completely respect the decision that all of you will make individually, because I'm going to say that there is no best practice. This is simply the time to think about whether it is, it is of higher value to have an at-large, two at-large positions who can then concentrate on citywide issues and have a citywide perspective that maybe acts as a check or balance on district? Or do we value greater the notion of having 13 representative districts that are more discreet, can be tailored more to tighter communities of interest, as the councilwoman said? What, where are our values? What I can say is there is no best practice. There is no best practice in this. There is a dominant practice of the 100 largest cities, and this list has been uploaded into our system for your perusal. Nearly 2/3 of the 100 largest cities have no at-large. Eight city councils have only at-large, and the other, I think, what is that, 29, have a combination, and Denver is in that category. I will say this also. As much as I respect the accomplishments of many of our at-large members, as the councilwoman said, Councilwoman Black, Council President Gilmore, Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman Sawyer have all pursued from their district offices issues and changes of citywide impact. You do not have to be an at-large member to have a large impact on policy. Conversely, I think the suggestion was made at a recent meeting that, you know, the district members might want 13 districts so as to ease our workload. But I could turn that around and say, maybe the at-large seats are there so as to avoid the workload of having to deal with, you know, my pot holding get filled or my trash can get picked up. I think those things equalize. For every Kathy Reynolds, who was, as I've said when we did her proclamation after her passing, the most consequential member to ever sit in this chamber in the last 50 years. For every Kathy Reynolds, there was a Sal Carpio, and there was a Bill Roberts, and there are many other district members who equally contributed to citywide policy development. And equally, as the councilwoman noted in our list, cities such as Minneapolis, which has 13 council members, no at-large, all district, is widely regarded as much more progressive than Denver is, they managed to do it without at-large members. And I would also say, I know Councilwoman Ortega, I've known her for 40 years, she served in a district seat, and she pursued from her district nine seat many of the same policies that are still important to her at the at-large level. So it doesn't take an at-large perspective to pursue meaningful policy change. The city of Austin recently changed from all at-large to all district. There, so there's really no correlation between having at-large and being better or having all district and being better. It's simply a value check. Do we value having tighter, smaller districts that can be more representative of, of more discrete communities of interest? Or do we value that check and balance that at-large can sometimes bring? The other argument I will make that works against me, and I'll be frank about that, is it does mean something to me that every resident of Denver has three representatives that they vote for, and that's something you should consider also. I'm not going to, I'm not going to gloss over that. I'm not going to live or die by this change. I just think it's something that, on balance, I believe the district, all-district configuration is, is the better one. The, I will point out, though, it wouldn't be my presentation if I didn't have data. There's no right or wrong way to do this, but I will point out that in recent elections, the undervoting in the at-large race tells me that a lot of voters don't really understand a low-level race like at-large city council. They focus on mayor in this town. In 2011, the last time that both the mayor's office and the two at-large seats were open in 2011, the undervote in the mayor's contest was less than 1%. The undervote in the at-large races was 38%. And then similarly, in all of our district races in 2011, undervoting was in single digits, which tells me that it's very difficult to run at-large for city council because of the money it takes and the outreach it takes citywide. So how representative are they? In 2003, the previous time the at-large seats were open with the mayor's office because of term limits, we lost 10 members of this body in that one election, plus a new mayor. Mayor Webb had to leave. Again, the undervote in the mayor's race, less than 1%, 30% in the at-large races. This last election in 2019, in the mayor's race, the undervote in the mayor's race was 3.8%, while in the at-large contest, it was 31.7%. I think we had a larger undervote in the mayor's race because one thing I found in looking at the, the last issue, the ranked choice issue, was that what drives voter turnout isn't really the mayor or the at-large or council. What really drives turnout is ballot issues. And in 2019, we had I-300 on the ballot, and almost everybody voted on I-300. And that's why we had about a 3.8% undervote in the mayor's race. So I would ask for your consideration in moving this forward, and look forward to the public testimony and your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seda Baca and Councilwoman Flynn. We have, we're going to have 16 minutes of public comment. Unfortunately, not everyone is going to have an opportunity to speak, but we'll have the first eight people who signed up each speak for two minutes, and we are alternating between for and against, or should I say against and then for? So the first speaker is Joe Noble, and he is joining us virtually, and he is speaking against this item.
Thank you, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Joel Noble. I'm here speaking on my own behalf to ask you to not forward this item to council for full consideration as it's not yet ready. In stark contrast to the previous item that came up, this has not had the extensive committee review and the extensive public review that changing the date or going to ranked choice voting has. I watched the operations committee a few weeks ago, and Councilman Herndon presented some really good information about the difficulty of serving constituents with the size in terms of constituents that, that is grown to and will grow to in the next 10 years. That, I believe, is an argument for more resources, whether it's more resources in terms of additional districts or more resources along the way that Council President Gilmore began talking about at the end of that meeting, staffing districts more fully or staffing central staff more completely. However, none of that really spoke to eliminating at-large. Kind of growing up in the neighborhood system, I've always heard for the past 25 years I've been involved, how powerful it is to know that you always have, have three council members, not only to vote for, but then to turn to when the topic's aligned or when you're not getting the attention of your local council member, which unfortunately does happen. Councilwoman Seda Baca said there's no guarantee that a council person at large will, will be responsive, but of course, there's no guarantee that your district will as well, unfortunate as that may be. We have, I believe, a problem that's been identified by council in terms of overwork for districts, but I think there's a rush to a solution here, and throwing out at-large is, is not been fully considered. Furthermore, to refer this measure to the voters is to blend two different questions. There's a question of, should we have more districts?
Sorry, Joel, your time's up. Thank you.
And separately, the question, should we eliminate at-large? You should ask those separately, if at all.
Next up, we have Brian Wilson, who is also joining us virtually.
Thank you for having me, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking for removing the two at-large seats and adding two additional council districts. I think everything that Councilwoman Seda Baca spoke about is very important to consider, and I think a lot of us, especially if we went to college, can think back to those days when we maybe had smaller class sizes versus large class sizes. I look at it very similar to that. It wouldn't matter how many TAs, how many different people we had involved in helping make the class be more managed, better managed, I guess I should say. I think what we wanted was the intention of our professor in that case, and I think the same thing holds true now with our council districts and our council members. So I would support moving to 13 individual council districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Estroff, also joining us via Zoom.
Hello, City Council. Thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Adam Estroff. I live in Baker, and I oppose this proposal to remove the at-large seats. I, you know, dispute the assertion by Councilwoman Seda Baca that the single-use plastic ban and the climate plan really represent citywide policy. They're not really contentious. They never really were, and the main issue that you guys deal with is land use, and that's where the districts become the most problematic. One of the sponsors of this proposal told me point-blank, he believes that, that nothing that happens outside of his district affects housing prices within his district, which is, you know, a pretty radical position. And I've seen over and over again how small groups of affluent property owners have been able to really derail any sort of progress. You know, I'm asked to participate in hundreds and hundreds of plans, you know, for bike lanes and rezonings and, you know, everything here and there, and then, you know, you guys as district council people never actually implement them. The only policy change that was contentious that's actually occurred in the last 10 years was the group living change, and that was pushed and led by Councilwoman Kneech and Councilwoman Ortega. You know, this, this is an issue, I feel like I'd, I'd never say this, but, you know, this is moving really, really fast. I think it's being motivated by the political considerations of individual council people, and we really should slow down. And as Councilman Flynn said, there's no right answer, so we should really look at all of our options. I think, you know, when we really get down to it, Denver has a whole ton of problems, and absolutely none of them will be solved by you having 10,000 fewer people to do constituent services for. There'll still be skyrocketing housing crises, there will still be the segregation that underpinned our land use, because that's the other thing. We could create some more communities of interest for communities of color, but we will also be creating more districts that are exclusively, you know, the white side of the red line. So these are all problems that I don't think we're given enough consideration. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam. Our next speaker is C.L. Harmer.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the contributions our at-large members make, but I share the view that our Denver would be served better by converting to at-large, to districts to serve our growing population. First, as you know, at-large council members do not have a runoff as districts do, district council people do in mayoral, and as a result, our two at-large council members must win the most votes, not the majority. Council members- Council members, our current council members, who I have the greatest regard for, averaged about 30 and 37% respectively in their last two elections. Another council member who I have great regard for was first elected in 1995 with only 19% of the vote. Isn't it more democratic to be represented by a district council member who's earned a majority of votes? Does the current arrangement encourage council-at-large members to ignore concerns of neighborhoods with low turnout? Second, and, and I would reiterate the view that council, district council people like yourselves, in fact, do address issues of citywide concern. My councilwoman Sawyer has addressed mayoral accountability and, or male oversight with Senate, I mean with council confirmation. I, I just think that's a specious argument, so I'll let, leave the other arguments to other people for sake of time. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you so much for joining us. Our next speaker is Mary Cottington.
Hi, my name is Mary Cottington. I live in District 10, and today I'm asking you not to refer this to the ballot. I recognize the need for more resources and just want to commend all council members for the job that you've been doing on a limited budget. But I would like to point out that Denver's still growing, so at some point, city council will need the resources to serve more residents, whether that is today or down the road, and so by eliminating the at-large seats in order to shrink council district sizes, we're really just pushing that issue for a later time. I'm also an advocate for housing as human right and access to affordable housing. Unfortunately, there are so many misconceptions about people who are in different economic brackets, and many district-based constituents employ their council members to reject opportunities for additional housing and for low-income housing in their districts. I think the safe outdoor spaces conversations is a perfect example of this. Local representation is really, really important, but most of the research done comparing at-large seats to single district council memberships is done with all at-large or all single district. And while in a lot of these cases, having single district council members does show a benefit for minority communities, that's only the case so long as cities remain segregated. And I'm really hoping that the future of Denver is, you know, less segregated than what it is today. I think the inclusion of at-large members along with district representatives creates more space for perspectives that take into account all Denverites. Much of what challenges our society today, I believe, can be traced back to our conceptions of who or what constitutes our tribe, and expanding our view of who is in our tribe and working towards outcomes that are the best for the whole is a very community-minded approach to governance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in-person Frank Sullivan.
My name is Frank Sullivan. I live in Park Hill, and I support this proposal to convert the council-at-large seats to council district seats, and for several reasons, most notably what I've saw on the slide from Councilwoman Sidibaka. Today, I wish to focus only on one issue, the idea that everybody has three votes in Several years ago, Elbra Wedgworth, who was a member of this committee, this, this group, resigned from her seat during her term of office. Folks in the district were really upset about that, because they said, we no longer have representation in city council. And we won't have representation for a while until she gets reelected, until she is replaced. No one said, at least I didn't hear, no one said, oh, we have two other members on the council who represent us. Everybody spoke, we don't have any representation. During district meetings, nobody, neither of the city council-at-large people came to our meetings to say, by the way, we got your back, we can take care of you while you're getting around to electing a replacement for, for a councilwoman Wedgworth. We never heard any of that. We were without representation on city council, as we all thought, because our district representative was not here. And the idea of three votes on council is sort of pie in the sky. It's not real, at least it wasn't real in our district when we saw what was happening. So I'd like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Our next speaker is Jesse Paris.
Jesse, you're muted.
Yes, good evening, members of council, those watching at home, those over in chambers. My name is Jesse Washon Paris, and I'm representative for Black Sarge to Move to Self-Defense, Positive Action Committee for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Carla Online Black Note, and I will be the next mayor of Denver in 2023. I am in favor of removing the at-large seats for the reasons that Councilwoman Candy Sidibaka has stated. We are not getting representation, especially here in Park Hill. I live in northeast Park Hill. We are not being represented. I ran for city council at-large in 2019. It is a very hard race to run. I got almost 15,000 votes with no money. If I would have ran for a district seat, I would have won. So we are talking about representation and getting the masters of the people's input in on this. That is not happening. Another thing is the at-large seats aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. I get more representation from Candy Sidibaka, who's not even my councilperson, than my own councilperson or an at-large person. I, I go outside of my council district to get help, opposed to going to a council at-large or going to my councilperson because I don't get any help. And there's many people in my community that feel this way. So with Denver constantly growing, and this city has always been segregated, so I don't know where people have been, but this city has been segregated since, as long as I can remember, it would be more effective to have at-large seats removed and two more districts added. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last speaker is Thaddeus Texa.
Council should refer the question of abolishing at-large council seats to the voters, because the courts have on numerous occasions ruled that at-large elections are unconstitutional. They've done so because such elections discriminate against geographically concentrated racial and ethnic minorities. It's important to note for this discrimination to operate, it is not necessary for any participant in the system to be racially motivated. Rather, the bias is structured into the system. Also, the fact that these elections constitute systematic racism does not mean that no person of color will ever be elected. It simply means that there's a differential advantage to members of the dominant group. Third, it doesn't matter that the court cases have been decided in cities where the entire council was elected at-large. Witness Austin's change. It is not all right to have two seats that are racially discriminatory, simply because you have 11 that are not. Similarly, it doesn't matter that there are other advantages to at-large elections. Given the legacy of slavery, establishing a system of government that does not discriminate against racial and ethnic minorities should be a core value which outweighs secondary benefits. Being anti-racist means taking concrete actions that eliminate racism. I ask you to demonstrate your opposition to systematic racism by taking advantage of this propitious time when both at-large councilpersons are term-limited and we're in a process of redistricting, to refer to the voters the question of whether to make our election system more equitable and representative by moving through a system of 13 at-large council seats. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that concludes our public comments. I'm sorry for those of you who signed up but weren't able to speak. We have limited time, and now we only have 20 minutes left for our discussion, so I apologize for those of you who signed up and showed up. So I see that Councilwoman Clark has requested to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick thank you to Councilwoman Sidibaka, Councilman Flynn, Councilman Herndon for starting this conversation and doing the work to get us to something that we can have here in committee, so thank you very much. I think that this is absolutely worth consideration, and this is, you know, has been mentioned before, this is the election to do it, with both of these seats being open seats, and with this being the cycle that we already will be redistricting the entirety of the city. I, I just, I wanted to weigh in and, and just say very publicly and very clearly that this is absolutely and in no way a reflection of the people currently in these seats. And I know that that's come up, and I, and I missed the first conversation, but it hit, it hit me a little bit more what this must feel like, having one of my constituents speaking at public comment, bashing district representatives, right? That he was talking about the system and, and his appeal for us to stick with the at-large and all the great things that they do, but in doing that, kind of bashed the district seat, and as his representative, that felt more personal, I don't know, maybe than he intended it, but certainly than the discussion should be, and, and so I do want to honor that, seeing that turned around a little bit in that moment. I, I get how it couldn't feel like that, but I just wanted to say that it has been such a pleasure for me to serve with councilmembers Ortega and Kneech. And Ortega, I don't know if she's still on, so hard not being able to see what's happening on Zoom, but having people there, but, so if she's there, you know, want to hear her say that, but being in the room for a difficult conversation with my colleague, my friend, Councilwoman Kneech, has, have you served this city so well? And I think that's what's really hard about this conversation, to have a conversation about, you know, what, what, what should we do structurally, and, and to look at, you know, the risks of what this could do, and the risk of what they could do without immediately going to the people. And, you know, Councilwoman Kneech, I, you know, all the times that we've teamed up, the times that we haven't, when you have pushed and challenged me to do better and sat opposite the table, I cannot even imagine the last six years serving this body with, without you, and so I, I just wanted to be very clear that for me, and, and looking at this proposal and weighing it, absolutely not, no reflection on, and, and just, the city has been so well-served by the two individuals that are currently in those seats, that that is not at all what this is about. I, you know, I think lots of points have been made, I just want to focus in on two that I think are, are two that I keep gravitating to, and why I think that we should let voters have a, a choice on this, but I really feel that smaller geographic areas, representation in over smaller geographic areas provides so many benefits for our constituents to be able to be mapped into areas of, I forget the terminology that Councilman Flynn used, but I think it's the same thing that we're doing with redistricting, communities of interest, communities of, I was gonna say concern, I was like, isn't that quite, but really, and really being able to create areas where anyone within that area can be successful in being a councilmember, and that's gonna continue to be very difficult as, as we look at redistricting, and because of where the growth is, if we don't do this, there are districts that geographically will have to get even bigger, right? We talk about the growth and how the city's getting bigger, but from a geographic standpoint, some will shrink because there are more people in that area, some will get even bigger, and it's already, you know, if you just look at the history of the district that I served that has looked different over the years through redistricting, but in recent memory, there's really only one neighborhood that has ever put forward, I was the first person to not live in that neighborhood who was elected, and I lived two blocks on the other side and grew up in, in essentially in the Wash Park area, and, and that, what does that do for the rest of a district that, that feels like they put candidates forward who can compete in that? And part of that is the geographic area. If we can size that down and create areas that are more competitive for everyone to have a voice, and for, and to get these communities of interest feeling really like they have equal chance at representation, and I think smaller geographic areas allows us to do better, still probably not perfect on that, but to do better on that. And then the number of constituents who have one councilmember, part of what I think is magical about local government is that it's local, and that we do have some of the smallest number of constituents that we represent of anyone, and I get people all the time who are like, I've tried reaching out to X, Y, and Z who represents me at state government, and, and I don't ever hear from them. You know, the number of people try to reach out, and there is just a limit to the number of hours in the day, and the smaller number of people that are representative has, the more that touch that they can have with those people. And, and, and so I do think that that's another thing that I think is very appealing to this, is it keeps us as small as possible to those people so that people can get directly to not just, hey, we need more resources, and so that there are more staff, so that my office can respond, but so that I can go and grab coffee with a constituent who wants to get coffee when they want to, because it, we have a small enough district to do that, and, and with the growth we, we are experiencing, the districts are getting too big for that. And, and one solution is add more resources, have a bigger office, that, that is not the same as being able to go grab coffee, to be able to walk your block, walk your park, sit with your elected representative and say, this is what I'm experiencing on my block that I want your help with. So, so those were just, you know, I, I just wanted to be very clear in my thanks and praise for our at-large members, and that this is not at all what this is about, and, and, and those two things I wanted to call a little bit more attention to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Next up is Councilwoman Kneech.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the presentation included a number of new arguments that were not surfaced in our last conversation, and so I want to just touch on a few. Today's presentation was markedly more about politics, honestly, than it was about the service of the district seats, and so several of the, you know, factual corrections and data I want to share. So first, the undervote. The at-large seat is allowed to vote, and, you know, Alton Dillard is here from the clerk's office, if anyone needs to check my facts, but the undervote includes those who only voted for one, and I will just confess that I'm one of those people. I vote for myself, I don't vote for a second candidate, it's not my lack of interest in the race. That will be counted as an undervote. So it is not people who skip the race, it is many people who vote for one, either strategically or by choice. So just to clarify what the undervote means in the at-large race, it is not people skipping the race. The second piece of, you know, is a conversation about competitive seats, you know, that somehow the at-large seats should be eliminated because they are not competitive. I just, you know, I think it's, it's a fascinating argument. We have an average of between two and six council district seats that go unchallenged in every election cycle. Two and six. I've never heard anyone suggest we should eliminate the district seats because people aren't even running against them. It has been 35 years since nine council districts or more. I can only, I don't, the, the records that I have access to aren't, I don't go back further, and I didn't have time to go to the library, but nine districts have not had an incumbent defeated in more than 35 years. So if we're concerned about competitive council districts, the situation is more systemic and goes deeper than just these two seats. You know, there was, Mary Cottington kind of made a distinction I was gonna point out about the research on at-large versus district, that most of it compares all at-large to all district. There is not as much critical research of the hybrid system, which is what we have. I will say that one organization that looked heavily into the hybrid system is the National League of Cities, which is a national civic engagement organization that focuses on equitable and civic engagement, and, and they have a model charter for cities, and that model charter in Section 8 recommends the hybrid system for many of the reasons that some of our speakers raised. So, so there has been a national organization that's looked at the models and, and suggested that this is a good path, and so just wanted to share that piece of information. The conversation about race is an important one, and I, I don't take it lightly. Racial bias is baked into all of our systems, our electoral systems, our, our government systems, and the at-large seats are not immune to that. I will say, though, that claims about at-large members, you know, voting against the interests of, you know, disenfranchised and struggling residents is, is a tough one to just skip over. I'm just, you know, I think that the records of, you know, the at-large seats in terms of the legislation that we've advanced, the, you know, leading fights against jails, championing human services, belies a little bit of the claim that minority interests or, or those that are poor or disadvantaged are actually, you know, the, the statement was made that, that at-large members choose the interests of those who are powerful against those who are struggling, and I just don't think that, you know, that, the record's gonna have to speak for itself there. But in terms of, you know, the ability to be elected or, or the, the voting power of, of people of color, this is a concern that we of color, this is a concern that we have to think about citywide. And again, it is not unique just to the at-large seats. We have five council districts that have never had, never had a person of color elected in them. We have other seats that have had one, or maybe two, depending on the history. And so, I think that we have to grapple with this. And, you know, I think that the idea that racial membership in a district is the only way that, I mean, I think we have a black mayor in a city that is not majority black. So, I think that our city has demonstrated, right? We've had an auditor who is Latino in a city that was not majority Latino, and so, we have to have ways of having elected representation of people of color, even where they don't make up a majority of a district, and that is our challenge. And so, I don't dismiss those arguments, but I'm trying to put them into context of the bigger challenges that we face as a city in terms of racial equity, and the fact that it is about what we do in our seats as much as the racial background we're in. Gender also is a factor. Many of the at-large representative years, if you do it by years rather than bodies, this has been a seat where women have been able to succeed in districts where they've not always succeeded, right? So, complex, complex stuff. I'll pause there and let others enter the discussion, but wanted to share some of the facts and information to put these things in context. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Kneech. Next up is Councilwoman Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to just make a request that if this moves out of committee, that we have a public hearing on this. So, let me just move on to, just share some of my comments as well. As, as you all know, I've had over 30 years of experience in having worked with the city council structure, both as a staff member and as a city council person. And over those years, I've witnessed many votes and decisions where having an at-large member at the table helped ensure robust debate that reflected perspectives of the broader city, rather than just having local district input being represented as part of, of the various conversations. And, and I think that resulted in, in much better decisions as a result of that. Not all districts are created equal. It depends on the geography that someone has, and regardless of how small they might be, if this were to pass, the geography of whoever gets downtown, or whoever gets neighborhoods that still have no or a lack of, of basic infrastructure, which is something that I have argued for in this city, to bring every neighborhood up to that basic standard, which still doesn't exist. So, you know, when you look at that, as well as the socioeconomic makeup of your community, what kind of crime is going on in those neighborhoods, whether there are sufficient resources that are being afforded to those communities that may have other social issues that are going on, those all factor into not all districts are created equal. So, doing, doing this proposed change doesn't address or solve any of that. I also want to focus on the fact that I think, you know, the, the further fragmentation that could happen is, is, is real. I mean, I've, I've seen that where if, if you don't have the opportunity for your district council members to partner with, the at-large council members to partner with the district council person on some issues, oftentimes, those issues don't seem to get any sea legs under them with the administration, with this being a strong air form of government that controls the purse strings. So, when you're trying to get an issue funded, it's not as easy to get it done if it's just each district person trying to fight for those issues on, on their own. As we have seen this city grow, so have the resources for each district within the city. So, in the eighties, when we went from 47,790 people, each district only had one aide. In the nineties, after the census, that number went down a little bit from 40 to 42,410 people, but the districts had one and a half aides. In 2000, the number jumped up to 50,421, the aides grew to two per office. In 2010, the number went up to 54,560, and that was the same size as back in the 1960s. Each office had, again, two aides. In the 2020s, when the population went up to 66,868, everyone, you know, that, that basically went up to each council office having two and a half to three aides, depending on how each office chooses to staff their office. I want to be clear, when we talk about the population that we will be seeing when the districts are divvied up, once we have all the, all the final data from the U.S. Census Bureau, those numbers basically include everyone. So, it's voters, it's non-voters, it includes children. So, when you talk about the, the representation, it's not all, you know, active voting members that call every office. And, and so, I think that's an important distinction to make. The other thing is that we also have a number of districts, so, so the budget that I just talked about, where each council office has received the, the same budgets, including the at-large. And oftentimes, just trying to do like a citywide mailing is very, very costly and requires, you know, the, the fact that we've had those special revenue funds that have helped offset that cost. But there are some districts that also have offices out in the community. Those are paid for by the central budget, and if you basically average that out, that's Some of those districts actually are in city buildings, so that number would go up. For councilmembers who are concerned about the workload, and, you know, some, some folks have talked about this, basically, I really believe that I have not heard arguments that justify moving this in a direction to drastically change the structure that has not had the robust community conversation that we did when we went through a process trying to bring forward the array of changes that were on the November ballot, this last election cycle. And, and I believe that this requires that, the drastic change requires that robust community outreach and conversation. There have been some, you know, councilmembers who have done some of that outreach, but citywide, we have not done that. And, and that, I think, is, is absolutely critical before we just rush into a decision that moves to drastically change our structure. For all of those reasons, I will not be supporting this, but if this moves out, I'm making a formal request that we have a public hearing, a courtesy public hearing on this issue if it moves to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortega. Next up is Councilwoman Hines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree with Councilmember Ortega that there's been limited discussion on the topic. Certainly, we've bantered the idea around theoretically for quite some time, but as far as citywide engagement, I agree that it's limited. I would say, all of the constituent, all of the constituent outreach that, that my office has received has, has advocated for keeping today's composition. Mr. Noble, in his public comment, right at the end, he was saying that, that this might be combining two conversations. If I believe, I understand what he was saying, I agree. I think that there are two conversations that we could be talking about. Conversation one, should we have 13 districts? Conversation two, should we have two at-large seats? And in this, in this conversation that we're doing now, we are maybe arbitrarily combining both of those conversations. And, so, part of the outreach, if we were to have it, I would, I would encourage us to have that conversation of, is this the right combination, or should those be two different ballot items? As far as the number of people that we represent, you know, Denver is growing. We're moving out of a, being a cow town and a flyover state, and we're becoming a major metropolitan area. And as that happens, we must accept that our democracy also grows, and we become more representative than, than we might have been when our city was 130,000 people fewer in 2010, or, you know, half the size even just 20, 30 years ago. And the final thing I'd say is, as far as diversity of representation, that certainly is a challenge. I would say that in our past, we have been represented by the Klan, and they're not really as interested in diversity. These days, I would say Coloradans and Denverites have a more voracious appetite for diversity as an example. My district has never been represented by someone who's identified as part of the disability community, yet here we are. So, I think that, I think that there are opportunities for, for us to consider diversity, just throwing that out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hines. Next up is Councilwoman Cashman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing that I've heard today on either side of this discussion do, I think, is foolish or without reason. I think there's good arguments being expressed, for sure. The one point, well, let me back up. My leaning is, has been strongly towards maintaining the at-large seats. Just seems logical to me that having that citywide perspective is a good mix into the council makeup. So, for a lack of a better number, let's say, the past few years, we've had about, when we were elected, 55,000 residents, okay? We don't hear from 55,000 residents. I don't, I, unfortunately, I don't have the number of distinct individuals that we hear from every year, but I'm going to say it's in, in the hundreds or low thousands of distinct individuals that contact our office. So, just, I'm trying to really understand, so if we go from 55 to 65 or 70, that doesn't mean we're going to hear from 15,000 more people. So, that's something that's kind of rambling around my mind, but that, that problem, I think, is solved by staff. You know, our city keeps growing, so Dottie keeps adding paving crews and, and more staff to deal with that element. As far as, the one thing that was mentioned, I think it was Councilmember Sotabaka that brought it up, having 30 RNOs in her district, and it reminds me when my colleague, Councilman Hines, had 10 different RNOs representing his address. That, to me, indicates something that, that a lot of us have been talking about, in, in that our RNO system needs to be addressed to strengthen it, to be sure it's representing our residents in the best way that it possibly can. And I think this council has expressed a broad desire that that be part of a ongoing discussion. You know, perhaps, we, if we're going to have a, a city with 200 and some RNOs, perhaps we begin approaching our, our RNOs as, as community planning development has approached, the Neighborhood Planning Initiative, where they've grouped our 78 statistical districts into what is it, 14 or so neighborhood groups? Just, just an off-the-top suggestion, not thought-through, but as I say, I think that's one area that is separate from this particular discussion. The main thing is, it's a great discussion, it really is, but as I sit here today, I'm where I have been when the discussion started, and my, my favor is, is the current makeup of council. So, that, that's my thoughts for today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cashman. Next up is Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree, this is a great discussion, and there's a lot to talk about here. And I agree with Councilwoman Clark. I feel like having Councilwoman Kneech in here, the PowerPoint presentation made it seem like our at-large haven't done a good job. And I'll just say, I've partnered with the at-large personally a lot, and so, I just want to go on record saying, this is no reflection of their dedication as public servants to the city and county of Denver. But representation does matter, and I really do believe it does. But in this last election, we had three council district offices that were outseated, and it was because they were giving preference to what everyone is calling special interests. They weren't listening to their constituents. So, that can happen at a district level, and it can happen at an at-large level. I personally hold office hours as many Fridays as I can. During COVID, I pivoted and I held virtual office hours. Before that, I held them at coffee shops so people could see me. I meet people in the park, I walk the blocks. My kids go to North High School, so I'm the councilperson at the lacrosse games, I'm the councilperson at the back-to-school nights, I'm the councilperson at the grocery store, I'm the councilperson everywhere, and I know that our, our at-large is also at, as well. I know that Councilwoman Kneech can go into Northwest Denver, and she's my councilperson. I know she can go into Park Hill, and she's a councilperson. I know she can go to Grant Ranch, and she's a councilperson. At least I can go over to Grant Ranch, and I'm not their councilperson. I do get a little bit of a break, so I don't know what it's like to have to represent the whole entire city and maintain that constant of being on and constantly having answers and constantly being asked. So, I really do think that this is an important conversation. So, in Northwest Denver, I've decided to do my office a little bit different. I have a planner, because one of the things that has happened in Northwest Denver is egregious building forms happen to pop up in Northwest Denver. You see the slot home form, it happened in Northwest Denver, in Jefferson Park. That whole entire neighborhood has been decimated by a building form called the slot home. And so, what I chose to do is I chose to hire a planner. Now, no one else on this council has an in-house planner, I chose to do that. So, I don't always agree that if we have smaller districts, that it equals better representation. It really matters the person who's elected and how they are fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' dollars, and how they, how they want to build their team, how they surround themselves with people who answer to the constituents and answer to the people we were hired to elect. In my council district, we've been receiving feedback. I haven't been able to do a survey, I haven't been able to do outreach, but there has been outreach from, I know that at-large, and I think Councilwoman Sawyer's survey reached a lot of people, and I would say the vast majority of people in Northwest Denver have asked me to not send this to the voters and keep the structure as is. And it's gone from, I don't like these terms because I feel like they pit people against each other, but they are terms. I've heard from the YIMBY group, that doesn't agree with a lot of the overlay work that I'm doing to keep them. I've heard from the NIMBY group, to keep them. I've heard from the RNOs, I've heard from the parents, I've heard from my, my family members, they don't understand the conversation because they feel like it has not been publicly had yet. And I do understand that there is this idea, a notion, that if we do refer this to the ballot, that there will be a public conversation. But in my experience, those conversations happen in households. And then, you get a special interest group who either funds the money to vote yes or vote no. There's a special interest group that wants to turn back and take away the small, the group living that we all voted up here, special interest group. So, special interest groups are everywhere, and especially when you send things to the ballot, you want to talk about special interest groups, that's even, gets even worse. You have a yes campaign, and you have a no campaign. So, in my humble opinion, even though I'm not a voting member, I would like to have more time to talk about this, and I don't think that just because, right now, redistricting coincides with the at-large being termed out, that we can't have that discussion at another time. In our charge- In our charter, it specifically calls out that we have to redistrict at least once every 10 years. I've gotten an opinion from our city attorney that says we can have this discussion at another time, it doesn't have to coincide with redistricting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. Next up is Councilwoman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate everything that my colleagues have said today. I think, you know, the vast majority of the points have been covered, so I'll go quickly. We did a survey that we sent out and asked for people to help us share citywide. We had 446 respondents, and you can look at this on our social media as well. Question one, should Denver increase the size of city council from 11 district and two at-large to 13 district and two at-large split? There was no majority either way, and it was 40% and 38%, 40% disagree, 38% agree. So I think that's really telling, because we're not having that conversation here, like Councilwoman Hines said. Wondering whether it would be possible to amend the language or add that in if this does end up getting held in committee. Thoughts on that?
We're open to it.
Okay, that would be great. Let's have that conversation then. Second question, should eliminate two at-large council members and just have 13 districts? 49% disagreed. And obviously, this is not a scientific survey, but, and then finally, interestingly, and the one that makes me the happiest, was 56% of people responded that council offices, no matter what, should be funded at a level that allows us to pay our staff appropriately and have higher per constituent spending. So I think that what this data really tells us is that we, that this is a customer service job, and that we need more resources to provide that customer service to our community members. I don't think that that necessarily has to do with the number of council members or at-large council members versus not. I do think it's important to note, as Councilwoman Sotobaka said, that people should have this conversation and should vote on it. So I would appreciate it if we could just maybe talk a little more about having the conversation of 15 and what that might look like, because I think that's an important one for us to include in here. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Council President Gilmore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sitting and listening to the conversation, and I know when Councilman Flynn brought this forward and championed it, and then I had talked to a few others, just really trying to listen to where folks are at, and my comments maybe aren't going to change a lot from how I commented on the charter review process as well. We're talking about a lot of different things up here, and I, you know, had an event on Saturday, and I had a lot of our elders in the community asking, so what's going on with at-large? What's happening? Why haven't you had that in your newsletter? Why haven't you talked about that at RNO meetings? And having to give them the answer, well, time is short and we haven't had a chance to have those conversations, didn't feel like I was giving the best customer service to my constituents, because I need to bring them into the conversation. And so I, you know, we can push this out of committee and have the debate on the floor, and it will either go forward or die, but I had mentioned this to Councilman Flynn, and I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't bring up a different option, and we do have the option to postpone this to a date certain, to give us the time to have the conversations, and it would enable us to get through the council budgeting process, the November election, and we could postpone this to a date certain, looking at that date certain as January 11, 2022. And I preface this because I didn't want to make a motion and just assume that, but I think that we do need to have this conversation. Is it going to then cleanly coincide with the redistricting conversation? No, maybe not, but it's an important conversation to have. And so I just wanted to ask the bill sponsors who are here if there is any appetite for a postponement, or is really the desire to move it forward to the full council and we'll have the debate on the floor on a Monday night?
Thank you, Council President. I would just point out the obvious, that that would entail making a change after redistricting and after the election of two new at-large members. And it's not impossible to have that conversation, but as I mentioned in my remarks, this is the opportunity, late as it is in the game, when the seats are vacant and we're redistricting. Now, Frank Sullivan and Thad Teska pushed this in the eighties under the same circumstances. If it had passed when they were proposing it in the eighties, it would have had the same impact. So it's not that it's impossible to do that, it's just cleaner to do it now. I acknowledge the comments that most council members have made about the very compressed timeframe. I acknowledge that. If we push it forward to January and we have a discussion, then it would not apply to 2023 election, and you would have two incumbents in the seat. So that's, you know, that's for you all to consider.
I would just add to that, you know, we're talking about two council seats. We're not changing how many seats are up here, we're slicing the pie differently. And so we're not talking about a change in budget. We're roughly dealing with $400,000 here annually. And at the same time, we're advancing something that we've been talking about for a shorter period of time with our bond, and that's over $400 million that people will be in debt for for the next 30-plus years. And so I'm just asking that we take into consideration the unique circumstances and opportunity with the alignment of redistricting, terming out, and this conversation, and let the voters decide. It is a heavy weight to carry as 13 members here, and we're not making a unilateral decision here as a body, we're giving the opportunity to the voters. If the voters don't feel like it's something they have enough education on, they're not going to vote for it. And so we have a duty between now and November to make them confident enough to vote either for or against it. And all that we're asking for is that opportunity in a unique time in history, in the same way that we're allowing it for these other unique opportunities with our bond. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. I wanted to, at least, if we could build a bridge in some way, wanted to give that opportunity, but I totally understand and hear what you're both saying, and I think also, if it does move out of committee successfully, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's an affirmative vote on the floor or we've got some time between that. So, all right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President Gilmore. No one else has signed up to speak. We are over our time, but this is very important. Would someone like to make a motion to move this to the full council?
So moved.
All right. Moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do we have a second?
Can I second my own? Second.
All right. Seconded by Councilwoman Sotobaka. Any further comment or questions? All right, let's again do a roll call vote of members of the Finance and Governance Committee, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Sotobaka.
Aye.
Councilmember Ortega.
No.
Aye.
Councilmember Hines.
No.
Councilmember Kneech.
No.
Councilmember Black.
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. That was really a great discussion. I agree that there has not been enough time, and I look forward to more discussion on the council floor and hopefully before then. Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.
Any word on the public hearing? Awesome, thank you.